Take couple more sips. Disgusting.
Once you pour that glass, it's just milk going bad in your hands. Just every sip is is just a little bit more.
Drank right away.
Oh, yeah.
I'm weird. You're the one doing scratch offs drinking a glass of milk.
I got in the habit if I'm gonna have if I know I'm gonna have cookies later. I put a glass in the fridge for like twenty thirty minutes before you pour the milk.
That's next level planning right there.
That's you gotta do some planning. I'm gonna hit the head. I'll be right back.
Alright, can we start?
I'm good. I'm already streaming.
Oh, stop streaming right about now. Alright, let's see. We're doing regular quads? Alright, he'll be back in time.
He's in charge.
Me.
Yay, Chris.
Tracy, you can't hear anything because I have the volume off.
Mic test, mic test. Jakey, give me a mic test, Jakey. One more time? Here we go. First one, I don't think.
Tracy, mic check.
Tracy, do you have your mic on?
The asylum. Do it one time.
No.
No. I don't wanna say it.
She literally looked like she was about to murder me.
You go to asylum. I'm gonna drink my milk.
Oh, my god.
Can I get twenty scratch offs and a gallon of milk, please? So. Love you, Tracy.
I might have to take a cruise again. Nobody's the cruise ships are leaving seventy percent booked, so the deals are way better. Christina's gonna have to wait on shore because it's during school season.
If you guys get feedback, let me know. You're probably going to.
We never had the last few times.
Why is she listening? Yeah, I hear her.
No, no, I have the um, I'm sitting like right in front of the speakers and I have it on.
You were once before and we didn't.
How about now?
Nothing, actually.
Nope, nothing now.
But now Tracy can't.
Turn on the stream.
That's loud. You can't hear that? You can?
She has old ears like me.
Are you guys getting feedback mail?
No.
Forgot I did incendiary rounds on this rifle.
Boom.
I know they nerf those, but I guess it's better than this regular ammo.
Right. We hit fourteen hundred subscribers today, Jakey.
Cool.
Nice.
It's awesome.
Next step, two thousand.
Next up is fourteen oh one.
Where are we going? I'm not picking because it hasn't worked out.
Same.
Excuse me, Bob.
Daniel?
Alrighty.
One team coming in.
Excuse me, what?
Yep, shoot daddy.
So?
I didn't know you were gonna give it to me.
Oh, there's two here.
My god, Tracy is in a mood.
Oh, this stupid.
Oh shit. There's no guns here. This is ridiculous.
I got a gun, but it wasn't ready to shoot when I needed it to be.
Beat us to that scan.
Yep.
Shit. Alright, um, Patty?
Yo.
Are they by you?
I got something here. Got one?
Nice. I'm here, I'm here.
I got one round on his buddy.
Ah, bro, his armor is, he's down, he's down. Shit, one more, one more.
Yeah, I had to run far away to get stuff. I'm sorry.
Oh. Not a good start.
Thanks, Tracy. She's here.
Instructive criticism. I really didn't hear. I'm just assuming.
He is outside the building on the other side by you, Bob. I'm not gonna say anything else. Oh, he's still outside. Bring it for me.
Nothing else, though.
Nothing else. Hey, listen.
That team is still in the same spot, by the way.
Oh, my god.
She just asked if you were okay.
No, just tell him a little bit.
Oh, that's Bob.
Parachute, my guy. Alright, I'm parachuting in with you. Uh, whoa. Getting shot.
Drop your money, I can.
Nice.
Oh, right here.
Oh, another one. Bob's got one down.
Got one?
Dead.
I literally went running right up next to him.
Damn.
Didn't have time to reload end plate.
He was about to get a mouthful.
Damn, I like that dude. I'm glad they changed the parachute logic. You can use it all a lot easier now.
Alright, where is a person?
And?
There's another one up here.
You marked that other one, the first one?
Yep.
Thank you. The one on your left is the first one. I marked the other. Ooh, just made it.
Oh, you asterisk better not be passing away. I'll be coming back for you. I'm not sure any of these houses here are loaded enough. People are shooting at me.
Try it.
And you know what? That gas goes on our loadout. You guys come back. Oh, missile lock, good. Oh, yeah, I see him now.
Hello. Oh, they're gonna blow it up.
Come on. Who's handling it? It's been all of a sudden.
Had a hard day. Wow. That thing took a repeat. Another truck down.
Oh shit. Those are the bastards.
Oh, jeez. You got it.
Thank you.
Obviously, those guys are up it.
Um.
Yeah, our loadout's in the gas now.
Dude, we're not that far off from a loadout, though.
Where are we going?
Dance hit it back down. Those guys were attacking you like right in here.
Going to that buy station.
Man, the costi on.
Looted. Four thousand, five thousand, six thousand.
Here's a plate, Chris.
Seven.
And Bob, there's two there. You can shirk.
Thank you.
Oh. Sorry.
Uh, just go ahead and take it. I'm not even looking.
Good lord, here we go. I got eighty seven hundred.
Looted head.
So.
Yeah, open doors.
I hear a box. I hear it. No damn money.
Got one. Uh, a little bit of money. I got five, five, we got sixty seven.
Ninety five.
Eighty seven ninety seven.
Another box, got another box.
We need three hundred bucks.
Oh, plate.
Oh, I need that.
Shooting, David.
This is lootin'. Rude.
Yeah, we got enough.
Rude.
I got that buy station back north of me. Or this one over here.
Or this one, okay. Alright, alright, we go to orange.
Orange it is.
Yep, that makes more sense.
Hopefully. You never know.
Ah, it's always a coin toss.
Yep. Money on the box, on the box.
Nice. Ninety three hundred.
There you go. Sorry, I went to the wrong side.
Oh, shit. I get him. Oh, my god. Uh, I hope I don't drop on the roof. It bounced off the curb. Okay.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Heading this way.
I got a trophy system.
Um, guys in here. At least three. I'm taking a wide berth.
Bro, camera on one. One right here as well. Down one.
One right there. Broke, but first healing.
Whoa, somebody's on me, somebody's on me. Shit, in the road.
Oh, shit. Alright.
He's on me.
Oh, behind me. You get him?
I got the guy.
Down one in the river.
I was just saying, I was getting hit from back here somewhere.
Down another one.
Alright, Bob, do I have a, do I have a box? Alright, I don't appear to buy Bob.
There's one closer to you over here.
I only have five hundred dollars. Can't buy you. We will keep you next on our list. You're on our priority list, Bob.
I gotta buy a station.
Stay alive.
Alright, be careful because there's other guys inside, just inside the circle.
Yep, I downed one.
Oh crap, I'm being shot at. No.
Oh shit.
Directly behind me.
Shit, I'm down. I don't think it's the same team either.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, different teams, different team.
I don't know if you're gonna make it.
Two guys right here. Yeah, they just bought somebody back here too. Whole team here.
That's up to you, Bob.
Oh.
Stop it.
Two right here.
Oh shit.
Man, I just landed in a crossfire four, whole squad right there on the mark. Damn it.
How am I still alive?
Ugh.
They're just leaving me alive. That's pretty fucked up.
Get somebody. Old mask guy.
Oh, good lordy. Guys. Oh crap, nothing. Swing in and get that. My. It's like the only thing left. Bonk in.
Where are you going? Your first day?
No, that's why I had a plan.
Did you play or run the wrong direction a bunch of times?
Yeah, my plan was to do what I was gonna do, but.
Is that one on the top of the hill above?
Just had a shot over there.
My god. Jakey's like, I'm gonna drive right by them.
It's not good.
Who needs armor? I'm gonna drive right back. What I would have done if I were her to get back at me, I would have gotten all the way over to that supply run thing and then bought myself armor.
Oh, I think I got boot. Yep. I got the old stanky boot.
Alright, Chris, you gotta pull out, Chris. Hi, Freddie. Jakey Freddy's here.
Hi, Freddie.
Jakey says hi.
Hello, Freddie.
Welcome, Freddie. Vote for Barry for city council, please. I mean, Freddie, Freddie is here. He's on our stream. He popped in to say hi. I mean, there's a guy here named Freddie and he popped in to say hi. You wanna come say hi to him? Okay.
Can't see anyone.
No, they're not physically here. They're on the internet. He just gave a smiley face. Wanna say hi? No, wait, where? Where'd you go? Yeah, see the smiley face? You like that one? Oh, you, oh, you don't like that. Sorry, sorry, Freddie. My son doesn't like that. Oh, he gave another one with a little wave. You like that one? No, okay. Sorry, Freddie. He's hard to please.
Unable to join. Why am I unable to join?
Not backed out. Chris has gotta back us out, but I think it's because we're not into the lobby from the back of Sal.
Right.
That makes sense.
Chris, are you there?
I am here.
Uh, you'll need to back us out because Bob got kicked.
Oh shit, okay. Tracy screamed in the living room, "He is coming," but my microphone is muted.
It's telling to pull out and Tracy's telling me something. Oh, my goodness.
Barry for city council.
Get down, please.
Do you need invite or are you joining?
I'm joining.
Computer, did you just post cat computer?
That's not the cat I chose, though. I'm choosing to choose this cat.
What you go kicked? Oh, got kicked. Uh, I didn't get kicked, though. One of our teammates got kicked, so, but we're all back together again.
Now, that time I put, I could choose, I chose one cat and I put a cat in sunglasses or glasses. That's weird.
Yeah, I don't know.
I picked a very specific cat and that's what it did. Let me see if I pick this cat.
One's a PC and one's a pussy. Vote for Barry.
What, bud? Who is Barry?
It's the name of my stream.
Barry?
What are you doing?
What are you voting for?
For Barry.
Why?
Barry McGoshner?
Because puppy said so.
It's a C H like a K sound.
I'm afraid to say it out loud. Afraid that it's stupid. It's something wrong. Oh, Freddie's just rubbing it in here. Look at all the cats he just posted. None of my cats are posting right.
God, so aggravated.
Yeah, the last part of his name is pronounced Akinner.
Oh, you're so bad.
What, Jakey?
That one's not even, it's just not.
It's not what?
Nobody's gonna, nobody gets that.
What do you mean?
It's not how you would spell, pronounce that.
That's exactly how. What is this thing doing?
You're just wrong.
Excuse me. A little bit.
Number eight. Freddie said number eight. I'm not sure what that is. Oh, I gotta record.
Oh, good, you didn't hit the me.
I did. Well, it's not like you actually said it. You could say it.
His name is Barry, Chris. Chris.
Where are we going?
Chris.
Lagoon.
Oh, I was muted.
Rangoon, got it.
So his name is, his last name is McCoakner, Chris.
Waka waka.
First name Barry.
But what are we? Barry what?
McCoakner?
Barry McCoakner?
Yes, that's him.
Excuse?
Freddie's got eight cats. What's that?
Maybe the last name should be McCoak and him.
Am I he, uh, am I hearing it? Am I he, uh, am I hearing it wrong?
Say it again. I didn't hear how you said it.
McCookener?
The cocker? The cockener?
Mc, Mick?
McCookener.
And the last part is Akinner.
Oh, McCookener?
Barry.
Barry McCookener. Yeah.
I knew it was taking so long.
No, but what is he? So... What is he, uh, trying to achieve? Uh, I got a, uh, purple sniper rifle over here if anybody want. I got another purple sniper rifle over here if anybody want.
See, I knew if we could get Chris to say it, he would take it.
What is it? What is he running for?
Everything.
It's still, it's coming in waves for Chris now.
Alright, I, um...
There you find it.
Our banner's close. I'm going for him. Hey guys, I'm gonna die soon.
There's Nias 44. Enemy dropped again. Uh, right here on me.
Coming to land.
He's dead. He might. Big dummy. Now he's got ten cats and a duck.
Uh, got the guy over here, blue mark.
Conway Trump's here. Damn.
Oh shit.
He's shooting.
These houses are looted.
Yeah, that's where our bounty was.
Yeah, our bounty's up at that blue mark right now. His name Barry.
How have I not found any guns yet?
I don't know. I pointed out a couple for you.
I'm not over near you guys. I've actually landed at Lagoon.
There's a Whitley.
Barry.
Excuse me.
Fuck you guys.
Yeah, he, he told me how to pronounce the last name because I was pronouncing it wrong. So as I said it, looked at it.
Oceaner? McOceaner?
So, but is this still a legit guy?
Created by Ferb.
Excuse, okay. That's not legit.
Alright, now he's over here.
I heard it today for the first time. That's...
Yeah, that's been like a morning news or a morning radio station type joke for a long time.
Well, there's, is it Tim that they do that to all the time?
So I'm thinking I need to get Scott a, uh, profile on my Xbox to where he can be in the party chat on his phone.
You can do that, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
Yeah, you're gonna be on a party chat. You can, I actually logged into a party chat while you guys were playing. While I was in my car on the way home.
Yep. Yeah, create him a profile and then set him up with the app on his phone.
Oh my god, he would love this. Okay, we gotta load out, yeah.
Not even close.
Well, I mean.
Gotta loot over here before it's in the gas.
We have things before we have money? Hmm.
No money.
Let us proceed. Boxes.
Here's a blue Cooper.
Blue Cooper. Alright Freddie, good night.
Good night Freddie.
Thanks for popping in.
The blue MP40. Nah, I guess. I guess there's other houses.
Have to.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Ninety-one hundred. Go up the hill. Found you some guns, Ferb.
I finally found guns.
Found your good font guns, Ferb.
I don't want good guns.
Oh, okay.
Ferb can die with any gun.
True.
Ooh, I'll take that though. Let me open this here.
Oh my.
You're three hundred short.
Sounded like it hurt. Yeah. It was just close to the mic.
There's two boxes here.
How you doing, Punky? Oh shit, right by me.
Soldier nearby.
Yeah, they're, they're parachuting in. We have eyes.
I killed one.
Yeah.
But I did have to clean them up.
Maybe not. Nothing on heartbeat so far. Nothing on heartbeat. Your box is still here. There's still plates over here.
Any of them have any good throw holes?
Uh, helicopter coming our way.
It's a king.
Is he?
Might be his buddy, like might be trying to get to his, uh...
Load out. He's smoking.
I'm still hitting with my bar.
Shadows down here are all squares.
At what distance are you looking at?
Literally down the hill, right down here.
Oh really?
All the, the shadows of the trees are all squares for me.
Oh wow. Uh, little digitalized, but not squares. Looks normal to me.
Mine literally looks like Minecraft.
That's like a... So, Lynn.
Yes.
Pumpkin's hair seems to be like, he was kinda looking disheveled for a long time, like...
Right.
He had like chunky hair and it was all sticking up and just kinda weird.
Right.
Right now, when I look at him, it looks like everything's laying down nice and neat. Like he's, oh, he's walking around. He wants to prance in front of me. Oh.
He's just like, pretty. My pretty hairs.
Yeah.
My pretty hairs.
We should have come over here and looted that little section and used the bi-station. Oh well.
So Tracy did the math and he's fourteen, not sixteen, so it gives me a little more hope.
Right.
That king was right here.
Going for that bike? Four wheeler?
Going for dead. Alright buddy.
Where are we going? There's a, um...
Shooting in that direction.
To the right, there's a, uh, blimp.
If we have a blimp up here, we can take from here. I'm gonna take this blimp.
Hope there's a limit that we can take.
I'm gonna go towards the bi-station on the right, the lower one. Going in circle.
I really like these balloons. The only problem is you can't really decide if somebody is falling in from log or if they're full in hell.
Wanna buy loadie? I got money, I'll grab it. Alright, I'm dropping eight sixty-eight right on the bay. I got a muti box.
Uh...
And, uh, there's my PPSH if you want it.
Alright, I'm buying a UAV.
Oh, no, 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 no. I must put a cluster on this by accident.
Aw, fuck. Okay, I'm not ghosted. It's good times. Dude, I also always roster this. I have a UAV.
There was shooting to the north.
Wow, what a waste. Alright, I just set a charge on there. If we see anybody buy back. If you see anybody buy back at this, uh, bi-station. Set it off.
That's where that fighting is on purple.
Ooh.
Oh crap.
Oh shit! I thought that was sort of you in the house. Oh my god. Oh, there's a guy in my house. Had no idea.
Uh, a team coming down on him. There's at least two. I think there's three.
I got a plate.
I'm dead.
I'm striking them.
I died in this building, by the way. Just seeing it. Definitely a guy in that building.
We got guys over here now too.
Yeah, that's who I was shooting.
One went to the right one. Oh, I just got gunned down.
So somebody's close? You got stunned?
Yeah.
Dead one?
Oh shit.
I'm getting hit.
Got one dead over here.
One between me and Chicky.
Yeah, you guys are between two teams right now.
I think we have three teams actually. Nope, 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 up this hill. This way.
Check, 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 check. Yep. Oh, got somebody behind me.
I would have hopped that though.
Aw, damn it, I forgot about the UAV. The one, the thing that I spent all the money on? Forgot about. Oh, he killed me with a bar. Alright. What do we do? Where do we go? Yeesh. Um, is there a...
There's like...
Thing around here?
There's no most wanted. The closest thing you got is a supply run right there.
I'll go for it. Stay there.
Got him in the ghoulie with my C4.
Too exposed. Yep, sniping that white house. On the right, go left, older.
Yep. Check. Wow. Damn it.
I'm gonna say I can't land on you?
Yeah, don't do that. Matter of fact, I'll save you the, the effort.
At this point, Chicky, this one's gonna be a safe.
Yeah, that's what you'd say.
This is where Sally drops.
Yeah. Fighting right here.
Oh shit, right behind you. I think it's on the ground, yeah. Yeesh.
Yep. No, he got naded by somebody else.
Somebody else got him, okay.
Yeah. Yep, somebody else must have got him because he just ran up and looted all his stuff.
Yeah. I thought he threw a nade at you and then ran into it, is what I thought happened. Hey mama. Alright Chris, we're ready whenever you are. Hello. So mama, did you hear about, um, Barry's run for city council? Mama? I think he's gonna go deep. What's up?
React this while you can. You'll be entering the field in a bit. Hostiles dropping into the area. Watch the skies. Enemy soldier nearby.
Mama wants to know who Barry is, sir.
Uh, you see the name of the stream? Mama? That CH is a hard, like a K sound. His last name is Akener. Well, it's got a mic like. Mic. And then Akener.
What are we voting for though? I don't really understand why we're voting for Barry.
Why wouldn't you? Uh, you may not. La duh.
Actually, oh yeah. Tracy, would you vote for Barry?
Who's that? Who's Barry McOckener?
McOckener. Trip, trip, trip. Tracy's done with cocks right now, she said. Done with cocks. Well, listen. There's a whole live world for you, baby girl.
Oh shit.
I broke my leg.
Hostile dropping in.
Sorry guys, broke my legs.
Ah, on my way there. I am, I am, I am.
Guys, got the guy that landed?
Yes. Oh, not that one though. Oh shoot. Ah! I don't have any ammo in this gun. Sorry, Chris.
It's not a pistol.
No, come on!
Is he out here, Bob?
He's already been here.
He's behind Chicky, he's behind Chicky or is he on Chicky?
Yeah. Rude.
Oh shit.
Mama's tied to Chris and Tracy.
Hello, mama.
Maybe it's kind of a dummy name, mama. You have to say the whole thing together. Out loud.
I got one down.
Oh, up here.
Ah, I got another one on me over here.
One dead.
Another one down. We don't know where the other one is.
No idea. I would assume running. Oh, right here. Damn it. He's right on that blue mark. He's coming for me.
Oh, he's running away. Trying to get to him.
Nice save, thank you. That must have been you running up on me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I have armor.
I got one plate.
He's running all the way down here.
Yep, he's in this house. Yep, he's in that house right now.
Thank you. Time to die bitch. Uh, somebody's getting the loadout. Oh, he just ran out the back.
There's two there.
Got one here. Oh! More, more, more by the buy box.
Shit!
It's a whole other team.
Die for, for.
Just gonna have to turn around.
There's at least one over there. I feel like there's more than.
Jesus, Bob, you scared the shit. Alright.
They're still up on this hill.
I'm gonna try to finish this scav so we can at least get a plane. Oh shit! What? Oh, getting hit by grenades or something.
The hell was that?
I don't know. I think they went down in the tunnel. Or they, yeah, down in that thing.
Uh, yeah, they're still. Yeah, no clue what that is, but damn. It hits hard.
Is it the bow and arrow thing?
No, I think it was that grenade launcher thing. I think they got it down below in the um. In the tunnel.
I agree.
The bunker.
Yeah.
Three, three shots and then.
There's a blue DP. There's a vehicle just drove up over to uh this buy station. The blue well gun.
Taking that DP.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we can go to the buy station up by the uh thing.
Lighthouse?
Yeah.
Don't know.
There's four plates right here. Well, actually I have enough to buy, Chris. I'm a muti.
There's boxes up here too.
Daddy, I'm marked. Uh, there's four plates where I'm marked.
The lighthouse, I apologize. I'm at the wrong one.
Wonder where you were.
Loadout just went out.
Yeah, you actually are where, yeah, I was gonna say you're where I marked those guys weren't coming, so you probably have people on you.
Another loadout.
Um. There should be plates like right here on orange mark.
Okay. Oh!
You can shot.
Somebody's shooting at me. Yeah. No clue from where. Oh shit! It's almost out of the circle. This uh loadout. Alright.
Oh my god. Are you serious? This box is almost out of the circle.
I've heard that.
I've got a um.
Alright, we wanna buy a second one?
Yeah, cool with that.
Grab some money.
One more.
Thought I could help a little.
There's some plates up here on this top uh level. Of the lighthouse.
I want plates.
Second one out.
I feel like we can just hang out right here at the, the lighthouse.
I mean, there's worse places to chill. Oh, until now.
There's the PPS.
Thank you.
Why can't we just hang out in the lighthouse? Anybody have trophy systems?
I have one.
This is where the circle's gonna go. We need to be in here. UAVs? Am I wrong?
Hmm.
You're right.
We can hang out here for the rest of the game.
Forty-one hundred down here.
Where it's going?
Thank you, I need those plates paid.
Yeah, do you wanna drop it back down?
Yeah, I was just gonna grab it. It wasn't there. Buy a muti box.
I just, you guys were already up here, so I figured you weren't gonna come back for it.
But really jumped down to come get it.
That was like two minutes ago.
It took me that long to get down the steps?
You said you jumped down. You literally jumped down.
I jumped down the steps. What's the matter with you?
Uh huh.
Remember when they were playing hide and seek and uh Tim landed on the roof here?
Yeah, with twenty other people.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was a ton of other people up here. Did they cluster it? I can't remember.
Um, probably at some point. Or the circle moved, one or the other.
I remember they all went jumping.
Uh, how we doing?
Oh, he's cracked, cracked. He's cracked, cracked. Oh, disabled vehicle. Shoot him, shoot him, shoot him.
The hell is he?
Oh my god, he's so weak, guys.
I don't know where he went. I never saw.
Oh my god!
Go after him then.
He's way too far away now.
He jumped and.
Somebody was just shooting at us from northeast.
Ooh!
Thermite? Um, why don't I have a thermite here?
Well, that was my, my biggest fear.
Yeah.
I'm confused. I had a thermite and I picked up a claymore and now my thermite is. Not there anymore. I need a throw. I won't be able to throw claymores. If anybody sees any kind of throw, call it out. This toy, I'll take anything, grenades, molly it or anything. Oh, found a second one.
Sorry, I couldn't help.
Uh, there's a guy landing near you, Chris. On your right. Straight ahead of us on the, oh, you're laying down. He just landed like up over here. He's down in here.
Shooting right above that spy station up here on green.
I looked at him, I said, "Bitch!"
Vote for Barry.
Vote for Barry!
On that, on that buy box now.
Bug out, I'm going.
Are there people in there?
Oh shit.
That was me, that was me. I thought I heard stars in there.
When do you throw grenades, ever?
Uh, when I, oh shit. When I lost my thermite.
How's mama doing? Did she respond on the, any of the uh messages? How's mama? How is mama? Mama? How is mama?
Give her a second to reply.
Mama? 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 Oh, look at this circle.
Nice.
I don't have ghosts.
I don't either.
Look at this circle.
Late.
King down here.
Dash is moving.
Oh!
Excited.
Oh my god, I'm muted.
I think we have enough um, I was wondering why you were so quiet. Do we have enough for another loadout?
We have two. Oh, get another ghost. No, I don't think we're four, five, six, seven, eight. Not yet, I think we do.
Somebody's there. Oh, that's you, that's you. Wait. That's her, okay.
Driving up in that purso.
Don't these helicopters shoot at you?
The, no! Not these. The ones in plunder do.
Oh, somebody just dropped in. Uh, behind the um. Nope, not further out.
Fighting up in here somewhere.
Somewhere.
I think they shot you if you shot at them, just the way these things work.
I didn't think they shot at all. Not these. I know the ones in. I know the ones in um plunder do.
Good shape. Hey guys. I think this is gonna be a win.
Duh, you just ruined it.
Nah, he usually calls it.
That's true.
Where are we going? Cause I didn't.
Alright, lots of shooting here.
I think it's good.
There's a recon going on due north. I think that the uh.
Literally. No direction on this um circle though.
Yeah, oh shit.
Nobody really knows.
Hold position for a minute, see where the next circle is happening.
It's either gonna push north or push south. And I think it's gonna push south. And then if that happens, I say we push as close to south as we can. Ow, ow, ow! Those are very nice goggles you have, Chicky. And beard.
That's, you know, it's funny you mentioned pushing. That's actually uh Barry's. No, it's his, it's his uh electoral like campaign slogan.
Oh yeah.
More pushing.
More pushing.
Push McOckener.
Less snorting?
I appear feet, Chris. We got feet on the other side of this, I think. I could be, I, I could be wrong, but.
Uh, people up here.
Oh, I got one on Harpy now. Got one possibly in there.
He's hurt. Broke his armor, he ducked down.
I got one dead.
Nice. Still one on Harpy?
Shots coming from behind us too.
Got one?
Pretty sure we got probably coming from this side.
Got one down. I'm down right here. I got one down right here.
Oh, Chris is dead, damn it. There's a. Oh, Chris is dead, damn it. There's a hatchet.
Anybody have a... Anybody have a gas mask?
No, uh, I'm not seeing one in here either.
Uh, from south, south.
Sniper right there. I broke him. He's right behind me here.
Just had shooting over there.
I'm gonna try to get to the spy station.
Alright.
Preach.
Ah, got me!
Oh shit, there's people there, people there.
Oh my god. That's alright, pull out. Don't worry about it.
No, it's distance, distance.
Can I get to you? That's not what Barry stands for!
They're gonna be shooting up, south though.
Barry does not stand for pulling out.
Right behind us, the rocks behind you. West.
Yep, one on heartbeat there.
Alright, if you guys wanna get in this building, we got a bunch of loot.
We gotta go back here.
Downed one? One here? Whoa, sniper getting me! Oh, I shouldn't have done it!
How gun do I have? That's not my gun!
Thank you.
This is not my gun, where's my gun?
Telling you, get in here.
I don't know where my gun is.
There's a vehicle.
I don't want this one.
Reload.
Yay!
Nice.
There's a victory cannon here, Chris.
He died in here, I think.
I'm dead.
You're about to come back, jailbreak.
I wanna know where I dropped my gun. Where did I swap that gun out? I'm not happy about that.
Well, Chris may not make it to the gas. Should we rotate left along the coast?
Yeah.
Here I come. So, where did I die?
What guns did you have?
Um, I had a bar. And, uh, MP40.
Hostile dropping in.
Uh, one. Hey my god!
There's five, they tried here too, Chris. Uh, fell in.
I think, oop.
He's running behind us.
They got me! They're, they're two eighty from me. Did anybody get me? Oh no, damn it! Damn it!
I got greedy, I shouldn't have gone after that dude.
Shit, sorry guys.
You were fine. This place.
Damn!
Two kills with a thousand damage.
Oh, what? I thought I had three kills.
You did have three.
Oh, showing. Oh, oh, I'm looking at contracts. Okay, yeah, 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 I'm dumb.
Alright, Chris, again, start us up.
Oh shit, sorry guys. Sorry again. Those guys would have had us, uh, had we rotated left.
Yeah, we would have been going right towards them.
They had us.
Yeah, mama, that's okay. I kept getting a bunch of six kill fourth places yesterday, so, guess tonight I'll be getting some fifth place six kill game.
Playtime's over. Stand by to deploy into the warzone.
Ah!
Friends?
Okie dokie.
Uh, getting there may be a little harder than I anticipated. Damn it! Alright, bye!
Bye!
I got kicked out.
But, of the plane.
Of the plane. Sorry guys.
That's fine, I actually wasn't waiting to get there.
You'll still make it. Where are we going? I figured ruins, I think it's gonna be Okay. Quiet, but not a great spot to start.
Actually, go down here. I'm off this way.
I never realized, is that lowland fog in this area? I never noticed that. I'm going for this car. I'll meet you at an orange-ish blue. I'm getting shot at.
Somewhere in between.
I almost parked my legs.
Okay.
They're after the pockets. Oh shit, I gotta go, I gotta go. There was a recon right here and it's gone. M1 Grand. They just need to get rid of that gun.
Which gun?
M1 Grand. Appreciate it. Thank you. It's a real bummer, cause in real life, the M1 Grand is like, one of the most tried and true weapons on the planet. Just in this, they're like, nah, we're gonna make it suck.
Seven K.
No. You should.
Says Barry Mc-something. Barry?
You already forgot the joke?
Yeah, I did. It wasn't, oh, McCokner. Barry McCokner. Yeah, that's an old joke. Enemy dropping in on me, I don't know where. Oh shit, there he is.
He just went into that building, I'm pretty sure.
Yep.
Missed every shot. He's right.
Here. Which way did he go?
Over here. I only have SVT.
That was pathetic! Crazy!
Do you have a gun? Cause this fucking trash.
He has a DP.
I'm making a DP.
Well, that's gotta be enough money. I know, I, I know. After that one?
Still short.
Boo!
Shot at from?
Yep. From that guy.
And then maybe that hurt.
Trace? Tracy's so sweet. She always tells me, "You only have three left," and I'm like, "After that one?" She's like, "Yeah." For me, I'm like, "I got four left." Um, oh.
Not seeing him up there.
Got him! She shouldn't stay down here with me. She looks exhausted. How you doing, punky? You staying down here?
Blue MP40 Dan, and I S44.
Um, we get loadouts soon?
We don't have enough money yet, almost.
But we got three.
Three V.
It's crazy, I figured I'm gonna survive in that bounty with it.
You only get like three hundred or something for the very first one.
Oh, that's right, they stack. They get better, isn't it?
The percentages go up. Loadout spice. Naval B.
Oh yeah.
All that, lost friends. Oh, oh, that was...
I'm not making the call this time.
Could be wrong, but I'm guessing these buildings here are not looted, cause the big, this one is not.
Drop the bunny for me, I'll grab a second loot out. If that's, if you guys want that, and I can throw it down here, do you want it down here?
Yeah, put it down there, I'm just gonna run and grab and come back.
Cool. Do you have enough?
Yeah, I just dropped her eight thousand.
Nice. Thank you. Did you get any kills on that? With the? Uh, couple! With the fish? Yeah.
Are you dropping ammo, Chicky?
Um, I can.
I'm running SMG and AR, does anybody, anything else? I don't really have anything.
There's a bunch of ammo here too, I guess.
Alright, I just put a C4 on this, uh, on this buy box right here, so if anybody hears, uh, somebody do a buyback on it, let me know. Set it off. How can I not undo that?
Lots of armor in here! No, why am I getting in here to pick up a rocket?
Isn't that funny? You're like, "I don't need that, I better grab that." I better make sure the person who does me in gets all the rockets they want.
Uh, doors are open in this building.
What about this building, I'm sorry?
Doors are open.
Doors open. Heartbeat is so far empty. Yeah, nothing so far. One on heartbeat?
Uh, over here.
Roughly around here.
He's in that house. He just ran in here right. Dead.
Nice.
Bob, where did, where was the heartbeat you said you had?
Uh, got another heartbeat in this building, with you. With Chicky. Yep, in this building, it must be top floor. Uh, blue mark, I saw somebody in, uh, that building. Heartbeat's gone. Guy must've run. Why is there money there? That's weird.
I got a buni.
I have a cluster.
Oh, gas again, we're gonna have to move.
Here, Chris, if you wanna get something.
Yes, 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 y'all.
Take the heli.
Uh... I got a UAV. Damn, we gotta go pretty far. No, we don't. That is stupid, right?
I think our plays go coastline. Coastline.
I agree.
Gotta watch our left.
That must one, and that's it. Hey, you wanna hit?
Is that my spawn? And that's it. Hey, you wanna hit this recon real quick? Just see where it goes?
You can, sure. We all go jump on it at the same time. We can do it real quick. I'm afraid to be in that spot.
That's what Barry said! That's what he's in for! Barry loves jumping in on group, group play.
Uh, car directly east of us. Going towards that buy station over there.
One of Barry's amendments is group play. Okay.
I have a guy down. In white. Oh shit, oh shit, oh shit. Do not go over that way, shit. Do not go towards that buy station.
Use your words.
Which fight?
The one, uh, north. We need to move south.
That one there. Got it.
That general direction, like-
South it is.
North, northeast, that-
Up here.
Oh, I got a heartbeat, yep.
Up here.
Oh shit. Oh, right here, right by me.
They like, don't know my ear.
One down.
Here.
One down, one down.
Oh, I'm down too. I got two down up here. Bob, just fight. Don't pick me up, fight. There's two down over there.
One jumped down. Shit. Where'd he go? Where'd he go? Where'd he go? I couldn't find him.
Right here, right here, right here. I ran right into him.
Dang, nab it.
Shit. Just me now?
Fire sale!
Of course.
Shit, I got somebody on me. Where'd he go? Where'd he go? Where'd he go? Shit, shit, shit. Just need to stay alive long enough for the fire sale here.
I'm gonna try to call. Right, outside, right. Back of the spawn. Left, right, 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 right.
Shit, shit, shit. Gonna stay a little bit longer. Oh, I'm out in the open. I'm exposed. I don't like this.
Your team can pay for your release if they can afford it.
He was on the box. He's getting chatted from me.
Damn! That was, yep.
Bad spot.
What, Chicky?
Bad spot.
Sounds like shit.
Somebody get kicked? Just three of us.
No, we're all here.
Ah, somebody shot three.
Holy- Christ. Dude, good job!
What was that?
He was shooting right through the, uh, wall.
I didn't even know you could do that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, fatty.
Uh, I got nothing.
You know, just grab a vehicle and just run around and cause chaos and mayhem, mayhem for a few minutes.
Ahhh! Can't do it if I die. Uh, yeah, alright.
Fast vehicle and large.
Fast vehicle. Nah, you're in. Nah, that's gonna be too late.
There's another one over here if you wanted. This'll be a little easier than maneuvering in this area.
Yeah. Oh!
Like a Michael Bay movie.
Sneeze us. They're taking some shots, that's crazy.
Right?
Oh, going right back towards that missile.
Yeah.
There wasn't a lot of chaos or mayhem there.
Crossbow.
Going again? Little bitch, what are you doing, baby?
Thank you, mama. I think I have a hard 9pm cutoff.
Don't tell me. Nope. I don't wanna know anything about anything. It's hard work.
That's what she said. It's not as funny when you clean Z inflection. See, it was yesterday. It was game. Actually, that's not true. At the end of the night, it was not. Chicky, what are you looking at?
Oh, royal. Dude, another crab circle. Not picking. No, okay. Take the balloon network back.
All the dead, all the AF players. There definitely was at least one person that, that was diving in a little further.
Enemy dropping in. Oh, right there, Dan. You're running up to him.
Get him.
About one dead here. That's not the guy I don't think I was going after.
Whoa, there he is.
Got one down in here.
That must be him.
I think there's another one close.
Guy in this build.
Right here. Uh, he's very weak. He's very weak, very weak. In the, in the round one.
Shooting across the river from me.
I need more ammo.
I missed every shot.
Cute.
Was he close?
I cracked him, but I missed it. Wow, I didn't miss a shot.
He's right on me. Shit! His guy's across the, across the river got me.
Got one down? I'm down. Oh my god.
Oh my god, he's gone.
What the hell?
No, I got a dragon.
That's alright. One guy, one me.
One still in the round building. Ran out of ammo.
It's a little nerdy.
Shit, are you serious? Damn it, there's two guys in the round building.
There's a whole team in the round building. Actually, it's a whole squad of four there.
Dang it!
Fuck! Uh, we got enough for one.
You like that Volkswagen?
Cluster strike here.
Uh, I'll get it.
Alright, I'm gonna buy one and grab the rest of the money at the buy.
Perfect, perfect. Yep, and there's a balloon here. We can use that to get the hell out of dodge. Got it?
Thank you.
Some armor around these tents.
Thanks, guys.
I'm on my way.
Where should we land them? Doesn't matter, peak?
Yeah, I, I didn't make the balloon. I gotta pick the car, shit. Bit shit, shit, I may not live. Here, Chicky.
Go, go, go!
I got no choice but to run through, uh, peak.
Chris is near still.
Oh, he's on the track here.
Hello, I'm Vancouver. Hello, okay.
Uh, we got a king right below us here.
My mark did.
We got a team.
Oh shit, right on me.
Right here for him. Oh, no! Nope, they got me. I had two shotguns.
Yo, this guy here.
Really? Why? Let somebody else quiz out.
Damn it!
Hold on, shit, I got him.
We wanna get in somebody else's lobby, maybe?
Yeah, we can.
My lobby's, my lobby can't be any good.
I got four kills. Alright, everybody leave.
Everybody leave. Everybody.
Chicky's, hold on.
I was getting something. He dropped it on his foot.
Kevin, it's okay. Everybody join Chicky. Oh, I'm the last one. I was trying to, wouldn't let you. Do it the hard way.
Were you joining Chicky?
I'm not, I'm not in church.
Oh, I thought you were. We're backing out. Everybody back out.
Yeah, we joined Chicky, but she was joining Chris.
Back out, bitches. Back fuck out.
That is not Barry's slogan.
Got me.
At the moment, absolutely nothing.
Chicky's frozen. Frozen in the box. The Xbox.
Yeah, I think I'm correct.
Yep. This game. What gun? Did I sleep? Ots, maybe I should run Ots.
I don't know why you say a lot of the shit you say although.
Eesh.
It's a fruit perk. It should look like a fruit perk. Hamped. I like comments, Cam. Have you been going EOD Chickie? Like we talked about? For your first perk?
Hmm, I don't know. Maybe.
I have a Tomatown on my first loadout and I don't intend on using it.
It is not letting me join Lynn.
She's still.
I'm not in yet.
She was, she got booted.
Oh, gotcha, okay, that'll do it.
Oh, I have zero of zero.
Zero, zero what?
Jinx.
You're not even in your own party?
Got him. Down two of twenty? Great.
Who are you with?
He's loading don't multi. Game from the sounds of it.
I'm in Chickie.
Okay. I think we got it.
I think we've got four Chickies.
Punky, you doing okay bud?
Oh, what are we all gonna do when Warzone 2 comes out?
You okay bud? Come here Funk. Come here. No treat. Not you PJ. PJ, come here. Hey, okay, goodbye. No, it won't.
Being a little jackrabbit dude.
Me, just like you're doing?
The only difference is I'm surviving. Oh, I almost got you again. I have no armor. So.
It's probably my last game guys. Hey, I actually need to get some dinner.
I'm gonna talk like this the whole game.
Like what?
I'm up against the mic that Chickie in the stream hears. Ri- right up against it.
It doesn't sound any different for.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
Sounds just like. Sounds like Ferb. Just a little.
Oh, it's awesome.
Like sandpaper. Little sandpaper Ferb. Where are we going?
I'm learning to hate this map though. Yep.
Yeah, I thought it would grow on me.
Like a fungus.
Oh boy.
Start in here and then work our way up. Still cross the water.
I hate playing all this damn screen.
Hey, you're doing well.
Not a lot.
Kevin, you only have a few minutes to play, just.
Fuck out, I'm going.
Um, I'll let you, okay, good lord.
You ain't out front, no, needed not.
Down to one is there.
I just went running into that building. He was up here too. Ugh, I have jack shit.
It wasn't on my butt. It do smell like shit in here. You're not one of those. It do be smell like shit.
Sky landed on the ceiling now.
Spilling? Yo, Mark.
If anybody, there's tons of armor.
What the fuck? Hey bud. Oh my god.
Where is this? Goes down below. Down the tunnel.
You okay? You okay bud?
The tunnel.
That's cool.
It leads to there, never mind.
Yeah, that's where I landed in rounds.
Where's PJ and Lilbit looking at me?
Still shooting right in there.
Cause you said treats.
No, I did not.
You did earlier, a couple minutes ago.
I got it.
Smells like shit though.
Hi, hi, oh, there's two here. I missed a bunch of shots and there were two guys shooting at me.
Should we hold off cause we can buy him? I really don't wanna die.
Yeah, I got you.
Where are we going? Chickie?
Ready?
Okay.
Man, I feel so naked with that, uh.
Yeah, I saw it back.
Heartbeat.
Oh shit, I'm dead, god damn, I never saw him or heard him. Just thought he was getting destroyed.
I got my money.
They were in this building.
Oh, I'm glad you marked it, cause that's where I was headed.
I have to.
I'm right here.
That's in a shitty spot, there's three boxes there. Right out in the open field.
Not okay. Alright, uh. We have five thousand.
That guy landed right in front of me, must be landing on that box, on the boxes. People are shooting at him.
Man, I'm an awful shot.
Oh shit, right next to me. Not surprised.
Oh, they're right on Chickie mommy. Guessing it's the guys who just got cursed.
I hear him.
Ah shit.
I just landed on your.
Yeah, he's running towards loadies.
I'm down in the street.
Guy on me.
Not one of them.
See you right there.
Yes, I am here. Should I go to loadout? Okay. So, where can I go to kinda? Get a loadout, I'm going over here.
Excuse me.
I asked you. I asked you. Where is this? Oh, did I not go up that route?
I'm getting hit.
Did I not?
I'm running. Why the fuck did my chute open in between a pair of steps?
There's a heli here.
And, oh my god. Grab him a recon.
Yeah, there's a guy up in this tower. That building where the heli is, there's, oh, he's, yeah, he sees me. Chickie, I'm kinda running south and wrapping really wide around that guy, the heli.
Oh, what the?
What the? What?
What?
I couldn't run. What was that?
There's a disabling perk that'll do that.
No, 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 I got caught on the, no, I got caught in the railroad.
Oh weird.
Yeah, I was running straight and then all of a sudden I couldn't run straight anymore and I was stuck in one place and I was a super easy kill for that guy.
Alright, they're fighting, those, those cars just went over fight with that guy.
Chickie?
Yeah.
Thing we need to concentrate on getting our loadout. I know there's a free loadout at, um. There's free, free loadout at minute five, or not minute five, circle five.
If I can get this.
We got one hundred dollars if we get something like that. Eesh.
Cer- certainly no rush for me.
He's coming back to you. I can see Chickie going up the stairs. Hey Chickie.
Got out, but steal his car. What the?
Where is it? Oh my god. So far away.
That's funny, I don't even know if that's worth it.
We have enough to buy one.
She's coming to get you.
The bandwagon.
We're gonna drive to that, oh no. Chris, you're driving. It's in fact, oh my god. He's right here, yeah, there's multiple people right here. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We should have, as soon as we saw how that circle was, we should have quit this game.
That's it for me guys. Yep.
Good night, good night, good night.
See you next time.
I'm the only one with any kills.